Okay, it is now 6:31 and we do have a quorum of our Board of Safety members attending in person. I have Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner McLeod, and Commissioner Battle. And attending via Zoom, I have Commissioner McElroy. So that does constitute a quorum with that if we could kindly stand and pledge the flag. Okay, for the record, today is Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the Board of Public Safety. It is now 6:32 PM. And before we go into the regular agenda items, excuse me, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chief Baldwin and Deputy Chief Barone.
Good evening. My name is Bill Baldwin. I'm the Police Chief for the City of Torrington. This is Deputy Chief Barb Barone. It's been way too long and too much time has passed since we've had an award ceremony. We recognize members of our department. A lot of this had to do with the COVID situation and other unforeseen circumstances that made it difficult for us to have this award ceremony, but it's been long overdue. It is both mine and Deputy Chief Barone's great pleasure and honor to welcome you all to this special occasion as we recognize and celebrate the remarkable achievements of our dedicated officers who serve and protect our community with unwavering commitment. Nothing makes a police chief more proud than when his officer is recognized for heroic and valiant efforts in the performance of their duties. And tonight, we get to celebrate and recognize the great accomplishments of these men and women who will stand before you. Our police officers face immense challenges each day, often putting their own lives on the line to ensure our safety. Their bravery, integrity, and dedication are the foundation of our community's security and well-being. This evening, we have the privilege of acknowledging those who have gone above and beyond the call of duty, officers who have demonstrated extraordinary courage, professionalism, and compassion in their service. These awards are not just a recognition of individual excellence, but a testament to the values that guide our police force: honor, service, and commitment to justice. They remind us of the profound impact that our officers, that one officer can have, not only to the people of our community they serve, but on the fabric of our entire population. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the family and friends of our officers. Your support and understanding play a crucial role in enabling these heroes to perform their duties with the dedication we honor with them today. We are deeply grateful for the sacrifice you make alongside of them. To all of our officers, whether you are being recognized here today or continue to serve quietly without public acknowledgement, please know that your work does not go unnoticed. The mayor, the commissioners of the Board of Public Safety, and the community appreciates you. We stand united in our admiration and respect for the essential roles that you all play in answering those calls for service to help keep us safe. Tonight, we will be honoring nine individuals for various exceptional actions that they have taken in the performance of their duties. These officers were chosen to receive these awards by members of the department's Awards Committee, which is made up of officers' peers. The committee reviews and discusses the incident for which the officer has been nominated and determines if the criteria have been met in achieving said award. The awards that will be presented this evening are the Department's Life Saving Award, Chief Citation, and Exceptional Duty Award. We will also be recognizing one of our citizens who went above and beyond in her efforts to save a human life. And I'm not sure if she's here, Ms. Delavalle, or is there a Ms. Delavalle here? Okay. Deputy Chief Barone will read a description of the awards and the requirements that was required to achieve them. Tonight, we're going to start off with the Exceptional Duty Award that will be given to one officer. That will be Investigator Robert Guida. Investigator Guida.
An officer is awarded the Exceptional Duty Medal, which is a highly credible accomplishment that brings recognition to himself, this department, and the police profession as a result of training, devotion, to duty, or service to the public.
On June 16th, 2023, the Torrington Police Department responded to the report of a 14-year-old male who climbed out of the window of his residence and disappeared without a cell phone, extra clothing, or any supplies. For the next three days, the Patrol Division continually followed up with family, friends, and on leads that were developed in attempts to locate him. During this investigation, K-9s and ATVs were utilized to search various areas for the runaway, but he was not located. On June 19th, 2023, the investigation was transferred to Detective Division and assigned to Investigator Guida, who immediately began investigating the whereabouts of this missing juvenile. It was quickly learned that the runaway had a reportedly homeless father residing somewhere in the forest of Winstead, who was known to dislike and distrust police officers. Investigator Guida began trying to track down the father in hopes of locating this missing runaway. Investigator Guida began identifying the locations of the homeless camps in Winstead and made daily trips in the area in search of the 14-year-old runaway, spending hours hiking through miles of the tick-infested woods, developing information as to where the child's father might be staying. Investigator Guida began receiving numerous calls and tips from civilians and homeless informants about sightings of the father and son, and it was learned that the runaway had great-grandparents living in Sandisfield, Massachusetts. Detectives soon responded to Sandisfield, where they were able to gain more information about this runaway. By June 28th, 2023, Investigator Guida had been in touch with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, and the U.S. Marshal Service and received additional valuable resources and requests for information. On June 29th of 2023, Litchfield County Dispatch received a call from a motorist reporting that they had picked up a 14-year-old boy in North Cannon and brought him to Washington Avenue here in Torrington. The name of the 14-year-old provided did not match the runaway, nor did his hair, which had been shaved off. Investigator Guida quickly responded and spoke with the motorist and soon learned that this 14-year-old was, in fact, the missing child. Patrol units were dispatched to the area where the 14-year-old was dropped off, while we're unable to locate him. Investigator Guida would then responded across town to Eno Avenue, knowing where the runaway's girlfriend resided, and parked inconspicuously in that area. After a short time of staking out the residence, he observed a male party appear on the street and quickly made contact with the party identifying him as a runaway. It was then arranged for the boy to be sent to Charlotte Hungerford Hospital for evaluation. Investigator Guida worked tirelessly and selflessly for 10 days, putting all other work on hold to locate this missing child. The case was extensively covered by the local news and social media. Investigator Guida's accomplishments in locating the runaway has brought recognition to this department as a result of his devotion to duty and service to the public. Investigator Guida is being commended for his professionalism and exhibited tenacity. His performance is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department and is therefore being recognized in the issuance of this Exceptional Duty Award for a job well done. Congratulations. Next awards will be the Chief Citation Award, which we recognize two officers. First Officer, Officer Matt Blonnik.
Chief Citation is awarded to an officer who self-initiated apprehension of a felony suspect where the crime was in progress, displaying initiative in solving a crime which results in the solution and clearance of other criminal cases.
On December 8th, 2023, Torrington officers were dispatched to the area of 311 Notting Hill Gate for a reported suspicion person complaint involving two males wearing ski masks, walking into a garage, and having just committed a home invasion. While en route to the call, officers were informed to be on the lookout for a stolen Chevy Suburban from Litchfield, where the suspects matched the description of the males on Notting Hill Gate. Upon the arrival of Officer Blonnik to the scene, he identified one of the males walking south on Notting Hill Gate. Commands to stop were disregarded by the male party, and the suspect continued walking away as Officer Blonnik approached the male on foot. At this time, he then heard the revving of an engine and saw a vehicle accelerating toward him in an attempt to hit him. Officer Blonnik was able to narrowly avoid being hit by the vehicle, which was the stolen Chevy Suburban reported from Litchfield. The vehicle continued on before striking a tree further down the road, becoming disabled. Officer Blonnik then drew his service weapon and gave verbal commands to both men, who now continued to ignore his commands and continued walking away from him. It was at this time that one of the men turned and began walking towards Officer Blonnik's police cruiser. Officer Blonnik attempted to stop the suspect from entering the police cruiser, but was unsuccessful. As the suspect opened the cruiser door, Officer Blonnik was able to restrain him as he removed the keys from the ignition. The suspect continued to resist while verbal commands were given to the other male, who also made his way to the police cruiser. The second male entered the cruiser on the passenger side and unsuccessfully attempted to put the cruiser into drive. Unable to do so, the suspect on the passenger side of the cruiser fled the scene on foot. A short time later, Officer Yabrowski arrived on scene and along with Officer Blonnik continued to struggle with the male party before placing him into custody. A perimeter was established to prevent the escape of the other male with Torrington officers, Connecticut State Troopers, and a drone team consisting of Sergeant Kyle Johnson and Investigator Guida that worked in concert to locate him. A short time later, the drone assisted in identifying a heat signature in the aforementioned area, which in turn directed the State Police K-19 to the approximate location where the other suspect was found hiding, trying to avoid detection. Torrington Officers Powell and Stevens would ultimately place the suspect in custody a short time later. Upon completion of the investigation, both suspects were taken into custody and charged accordingly. Officer Blonnik is being commended for the professionalism and exhibited bravery in his role of the apprehension of the two suspects at the risk of his own life. Officer Blonnik's performance is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department, and he is therefore being recognized in the issuance of this Chief Citation Award for a job well done. The next award is Sergeant Dustin Baldus. On January 8th, 2020, Sergeant Dustin Baldus, along with Detective Keith DeBlaine, were dispatched to Burr Mountain Road for a report of a larceny from a cell phone communications tower site. It was determined that the entry was forced into the outbuilding of the tower site, where 16 backup batteries had been stolen. These batteries are critical to maintaining communications for an entire geographic area in the event of a power outage. The value of those batteries was well over $16,000. Additionally, it was learned that there had been other thefts from radio towers in New York and Massachusetts similar to this one. Upon processing the scene for evidence, a discarded receipt from Fairfield was located, which contained longitude and latitude markings written on the back of the receipt to include various location descriptions. Through extensive investigation, Sergeant Baldus and Detective DeBlaine were able to draft a search warrant in which a suspect was identified. Additionally, locations of the suspect were tracked, showing his location at the Burr Mountain Road site. On June 10th, 2020, another burglary was reported at a cell tower site on Upper East Main Street, in which another 16 backup batteries were also stolen, also valued at over $16,000. Additional search warrants were drafted and additional leads about the suspect were gathered. After the submission of nine search warrants and extensive follow-up investigation, an arrest warrant was drafted and signed for the arrest of the accused in these two burglaries. This also led to his being arrested in other jurisdictions for similar burglaries and larcenies. Sergeant Baldus worked tirelessly in this investigation, in which his dedication and attention to detail resulted in the solving of this serious crime for not only the Torrington incidents, but other locations as well. Sergeant Baldus's professionalism and performance is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department, and he is therefore being recognized in the issuance of this Chief Citation Award for a job well done. Next, we will be administering the awards for life-saving. Officer Matthew Pfeifer.
Life-saving medal is awarded to an officer for an act performed in a line of duty where disregard for personal safety and prompt and alert action results in the saving of a life.
During the early evening of March 30th, 2019, Officer Matt Pfeifer and Christopher Abling were dispatched to the cliffs overlooking Route 8, located at the end of Patterson Street, for a reported suicidal male. On arrival of Officers Pfeifer and Abling, a male was located sitting only inches away from the edge of the 50-foot cliff. Below lay a rocky bed and speeding motorist traveling north on Route 8 between Exit 43 on-ramp and the 44 off-ramp. Officer Abling attempted to reason with the male for some time until he found that the male was determined to end his own life. During the verbal interaction, Officer Abling and Pfeifer seized the moment of opportunity grabbing the male by the arm. And seeing the officers were attempting to stop him from jumping, the male now went from suicidal to homicidal. The male became extremely angry and began to struggle with the officers, in which a physical altercation ensued. At one point, the male had found Officer Pfeifer between him and the edge of the cliff, where Officer Pfeifer was only about a foot away from its edge, preventing the male from jumping. The subject attempted to kick Officer Pfeifer off the cliff by striking his left knee. Only out of sure will and determination was Officer Pfeifer able to grab the male and hold on until he was able to gain his footing. After a lengthy struggle and with the assistance of fellow officers who had responded, the male was ultimately subdued in handcuffs and carried off the cliff to a waiting ambulance. He was then transported to Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, where he received the much-needed help. Officer Pfeifer is being commended for his exhibited bravery and professionalism on this day. You not only subdued a combative suicidal male, but did so as you risked your own life and limb beyond the scope of your training and without hesitation. Your actions saved the life of a member of this community at a very, very high risk of losing your own. Officer Pfeifer, your efforts and accomplishments reflect distinct credit upon yourself and is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department, and you are therefore being recognized in the issuance of this Life Saving Award for a job well done. Officer Oscar Segue. On July 23rd, 2021, at about 6:10 in the morning, while off-duty and on his way to work, Officer Segue was driving northbound on Wall Street when he observed black smoke coming from the second-floor balcony of 125 Wall Street. He immediately turned his car around and noticed flames coming from the second-floor porch. Within minutes, the second-floor porch was engulfed, and fire began to spread to the third floor. Officer Segue immediately called LCD to report the structure fire and then proceeded to assist with the evacuation of residents of the three-family home. At time, Officer Segue entered the home at the risk of his own life and safety before firefighters arrived, to ensure that everyone was out of the house before the fire engulfed both the second and the third-floor apartments. Officer Segue's swift and courageous actions kept several members of the community safe from harm and led to the quick containment of what could have been a much larger and deadly situation. Officer Segue undoubtedly saved the life of some of the residents of this house by his quick thinking and call to action. Firefighters arrived shortly thereafter and did a tremendous job in quickly extinguishing the fire. As a result of Officer Segue's actions, no one was injured in what could have been a completely different scenario. Officer Segue is being commended for his professionalism and exhibited bravery. His performance is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department, and he is therefore being recognized in the issuance of this Life Saving Award for a job well done. Nice job, Oscar. Officer Stevens and Hubbard. On January 3rd, 2022, during the evening shift, Officer Daniel Stevens and Alexander Hubbard were dispatched to 128 Church Street for a problem 911. Litchfield County Dispatch reported that they received a 911 hang-up call, and on callback, they spoke to a female who stated that there was no emergency and that she accidentally hit the SOS feature on her phone. Upon the arrival of Officers Stevens and Hubbard, they knocked on the door to the apartment with no response. As they continued to make contact with parties inside, they eventually heard a female's voice who responded that they also heard some type of disturbance taking place inside the apartment. Based on the urgency of the matter, Officer Stevens forced entry into the apartment. Once in, the officers encountered a male covered in blood, standing in the hallway, being supported by a female, at which time the male party collapsed to the floor. The male was observed to be pale and was fading in and out of consciousness. Officer Stevens and Hubbard immediately rendered first aid, and Officer Hubbard placed a tourniquet to the right arm of the patient, where he was bleeding profusely. A second tourniquet was also placed on the arm by a second officer, and Officer Stevens assisted by tightly holding a blood-stained towel and applying direct pressure to the wound to help stop the bleeding. While on the scene, Officer Stevens immediately called for an ambulance, and Trinity ambulance arrived a short time later to take over the care of the male's injury. He was transported to St. Mary's Hospital, Trauma Unit, and Waterbury due to the severity of his injuries. An on-scene investigation revealed that the male, who suffers from a variety of mental health and addiction issues, had cut his arm just above the wrist by using a large serrated kitchen knife, causing such a deep laceration that it completely cut through arteries, muscles, and tendons. It was learned that the male had lacerated his arm just prior to his girlfriend calling 911. Later, Trinity personnel who were on scene, along with doctors and nurses of St. Mary's Hospitals, all reported that the use of the tourniquets by the officers and the first aid rendered by them saved this man's life. Officer Stevens and Hubbard are being commended for their professionalism and exhibited first-aid actions that saved this person's life. They displayed unbelievable composure, efficiency, and tact in dealing with a very difficult scene and situation. Officer Stevens and Hubbard's performance is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department, and they are both being therefore recognized in the issuance of this Life Saving Award for a very well-done job. Nice job, guys. Officer Vincent Powell. On July 30th, 2024, Officer Vincent Powell was dispatched to 23 Highland Avenue for a well-being check. Upon his arrival, Officer Powell observed through a window a male who was bleeding and a woman holding a knife. While they noticed Officer Powell, the two individuals moved into another room to hide. Officer Powell announced himself and, due to the urgency of what he observed through the window, forced his way into the home. Upon entering the apartment, there were several people, including children, inside, who were speaking Spanish, making it difficult for Officer Powell to get a grasp on what was happening. Further, Officer Powell noticed that there was a significant amount of blood throughout the apartment. While searching for an injured party, he came across a male who was bleeding profusely from his hand, suffering from a deep laceration. Officer Powell immediately administered first aid by applying a tourniquet to the injured area, which resulted in the slowing of the bleeding wound, thus saving the life of the injured party. Firefighters and ambulance personnel shortly arrived thereafter and continued to administer first aid to the injured male. The investigation was difficult to decipher due to the complexity of the language barriers and inconsistent stories. Officers on scene, with the help of a translator from the Winstead Police Department, were able to determine that a violent domestic disturbance had occurred, identifying the injured male party as the primary aggressor. Officer Powell is being commended for his professionalism and quick thinking in a very vicarious situation. His actions helped to save the life of a person who was severely injured. Officer Powell's performance is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department, and he is therefore being recognized in the issuance of this Life Saving Award for a job well done. And is Ms. Delavalle here?
Civilian Service Medal is awarded to the person whose personal assistance by a civilian in apprehending a criminal or extending oneself beyond one's safety to provide prompt action in aiding a police officer in the performance of his or her duty.
On August 23rd, 2019, Christine Delavalle was driving by the parking lot of Booker Memorial Child Care on Litchfield Street. When she heard a car engine revving, she looked over and observed a male on a bicycle appearing to be frantic in his attempt to gain access to the vehicle and to assist an unconscious male. Upon recognizing the gravity of the situation, she immediately went to the aid of this person. As Ms. Delavalle pulled in to assist, she realized the car doors to the vehicle were locked and that there was no way to render aid to the unconscious male who was in the driver's seat. Acting quickly, Delavalle ran to her vehicle to fetch a car jack, then went to the locked vehicle and broke the rear passenger window of the unconscious male's vehicle to gain access and assist him. Once access to the vehicle was gained, Mrs. Delavalle pulled the lifeless male from his vehicle, laid him on the ground, and immediately began CPR. Delavalle continued to perform CPR until Officer Foxer had arrived on the scene and administered Narcan, and she continued to perform CPR in between the doses of Narcan until the male regained consciousness. Ms. Delavalle's quick thinking and actions were key to the male's survival, who was transported to Charlotte Hungerford Hospital. Your efforts and caring attitude towards your fellow man and an attempt to save one's life is heroic. You show great courage and compassion in your selfless act of kindness. The Torrington Police Department, the City of Torrington, and the City of Torrington appreciates you and will be grateful for stepping up to help when you didn't have to. We hope that this selfless act will help a fellow person in distress and will serve as an example and inspire others to consider taking action in emergencies to help others. Your performance to help a citizen of our community is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department, and you are therefore being recognized at the issuance of a civilian service certificate for a job well done. As we come to the end of this awards recognition ceremony, understand that these awards presented symbolize not just personal achievement, but the collective commitment to a higher standard of service, courage, and integrity within our community. To the officers that received an award this evening, know that your dedication has shown brightly. Your stories of bravery, perseverance, and selflessness inspire us all and remind us of the profound impact that one individual's efforts, namely yours, can have on the safety and well-being of an entire community. To the families and friends of those who were honored here this evening, your support and sacrifices do not go unnoticed. The strength of our officers is deeply rooted in the love, support, and encouragement that they all receive from you. And to our community this evening, and to our community, this evening's ceremony is a testament to the strong partnership between those who serve and those who benefit from their service. It is a reminder that we are all part of a shared mission to uphold justice, promote safety, and foster a more secure environment for everyone. In closing, the Deputy Chief and I want to extend our deepest gratitude to all of you who continue to support and uplift our officers in their daily endeavors. As you leave here tonight, reflect with renewed commitment to our shared values and our heartfelt appreciation for the heroic work that our police officers do every day. Thank you, and may God bless and protect all of you.
Thank you, Chief. And to all of the officers being recognized, to all of the officers, we're incredibly grateful. Thank you all for your service and commitment to our community. I'm going to sort of give a few minutes because I'm sure the families want to make their escape while they can before we get into the more mundane part of our meeting. I know, I'm always just a little disappointed that the reporters aren't here. We probably should let them know that these are the meetings they should be attending and have this opportunity to talk about the great things our officers and firefighters are doing. Yeah. All right. Excuse me. So we're gonna jump into the regular agenda. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, and seconded by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we are open to the public. I see Tom is in the audience. Any? One more right on then, unless you wanted to just say something as a public. Moving into item two, I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September 4th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's report for August 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And I'm gonna give this one to Commissioner Battle. Questions on the report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all in, thank you. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept Fire Chief Borden's reports for August 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner McLeod. And the floor is open for questions.
Deputy, I have a question for you about your overtime. Can you explain that? We're like 81,000.
Yeah, so the overtime is still the training for the FEMA. Rest of your classes will be done in November, so we have three more, three or four more classes to do, and they're all gonna be back-to-back-to-back, so you're gonna see a lot of overtime in the next month or two.
It jumped from 29,000 to 81,000.
Yeah. That's because the classes were off. They're all back-to-back now, and they're not like, before they were like one month in, you know, in March, and then they were again in August. There, we'd done three, like, literally six weeks in a row.
Oh, it's September's look.
Pardon?
September's report, and we're in August, but do you have September's report there?
Yeah, like I said, it's gonna be the same.
Same.
Yeah, you're gonna see a high overtime, that'll be reimbursed, 90% from FEMA.
Do we budget for that?
Yes. We budgeted the 10% requirement for FEMA match. FEMA's gonna carry the other 90%.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And as far as fire trucks, are we okay with repairs and?
It's an ongoing. Rosenbauer is rosin broken, so we're fighting it. We're going to eventually be talking to the fleet management about our truck one and the expenses costing and see if we can move that up a couple of years, but that's only 10 years old, and it's got another 10 years to go by the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And it's gonna be brutal, so.
What's breaking on that truck?
Just everything.
Everything, huh?
Everything. Air, you know, it's air, it's lights, it's electrical, the turntable, the ladder, you know, we've dumped a lot of money into it.
Okay, thanks. What is, what is, Debbie, what is the estimated time of arrival of the new truck in 25? Because that's fluctuated around.
Correct. So our, my understanding is, well, it's April now, that's what we were told, April. According to our vendor, E1 had a nationwide meeting with all their distributors, and they made a quote-unquote mistake that they're four to six months behind. They thought they were ahead, but they're four to six months behind.
Of course.
That's what we were told. We have other theories, but, oh, April right now is the delivery.
Other questions for the chief? I mean Deputy Chief. All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Who cares? Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept the EMS provider activity reports for August 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on this report?
Jeff, I have one question for you, and it's really not on the report, but just in general. Is it true that Harrington and Litchfield ambulances will not come to Torrington?
Yes, that's true. Phantom, Winston, and New Hartford are really the only units. Goshen as well that will respond.
Okay. So mutual aid only works when we feel like doing it?
Yeah, I mean, we respond mutual aid into their towns. You know, Harrington and Litchfield do not sign bundle billing agreements with us, but we still provide, you know, paramedic intercepts to them. Obviously the right thing to do, but, yeah, we don't get reimbursed for that.
I mean, I know fire and ambulance services, apples and oranges, but both of those services are partially funded by the towns, so maybe I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Benedetto one of these days and say, why are we doing it either way? You know? Or talk to the first, not to put this on you, Mayor, but
No, I
we're selectmen and go, hey.
Yeah.
You know, everybody's ready to get in line for the accolades, you know, to do everything, but, you know, I thought the number-one goal was to help people, not play political games and crap, you know?
It should be, and again, you know, we're, it's difficult for us because we're always gonna do the right thing. I wouldn't want one of my family members to not receive a paramedic, you know, in one of those towns, so, like I say, we continue to do it, but, you know, it's, we never receive any of their help when it comes to, you know, mutual aid.
And I respect that they're volunteers, and it's not as simple, I understand that.
Right.
But when it's zero, come on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Other questions on the EMS provider reports? And I will follow up on that, I think it's a point well made. All right, then I'm gonna call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the Board of Safety Policy Subcommittee.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. And I know this is, you're minus the chairman, I don't know, did you want to do a motion to table?
We'll have to make a motion to table that, please.
So I have a motion to table, do I have a second to table?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving into item seven, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the volunteer fire departments.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Battle. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're already at the, at the ready.
Evening, Mayor, and members of the Board of Public Safety, for the record, Chief Kalanowski with Drakeville Volunteer Fire Department. I'm happy to report that we are maintaining our 100% response rate. We received 14 calls for service, responded to all 14 calls, and our average response membership remains at three interior, one exterior as well. We were able to recruit two individuals, two new members, one of which is highly enthusiastic about wanting to go into fire one, so we're just waiting for that process to open up before we can register him for some classes. As far as training goes, we have 114 and a quarter hours of cumulative training hours between our departments. And for the capital improvement side, I know I talked a little bit about it last month and the, you know, a couple of months prior, we did resurface our rear parking lot, which was in need of some pretty desperate repairs. We were able to get some community organizations to step in and donate some materials on that, so we were able to accomplish that in-house at no additional cost to the taxpayers. And as far as technology, we are transitioning from spotted dog response software to fire tech, which is what LCD is working to transition all the fire departments into here. It works a little more seamlessly, they're able to actually see our response in their CAD system, which is gonna reduce the radio congestion and some of the issues there, so that's all I've got. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to take them.
What's your secret getting these guys to respond?
Good culture.
Good leadership.
As a matter of fact, we just, we had our 75th anniversary ball last Sunday, or Saturday, well-attended, 70 community members, and we were able to raise some desperately needed funds for the department, so appreciate the community's support there as well.
Great news. Any other questions for Chief Kalanowski? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move into item eight, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're, over to you, Chief Baldwin, anything this evening?
Very briefly, in the spirit of the awards this evening, myself and Deputy Chief Barone went to Stratford last week, where Officer Matt Delagnes was honored for his academics. He was graduated top of his class last year from the academy, and he and other officers from the top of, top graduating classes were honored at an awards ceremony and dinner down at Stratford last night, or last week, and it was an honor to be there on his behalf. Also, this Friday, Officer Conrad Avalon is going to be recognized by MAD for his DWI efforts, so there's another officer for the work that he's doing out there, keeping our roads safe through the DWIs, proud of both these guys for their accomplishments. Right now, we have two people in the academy, one on FTO, we're still down 14. We're trying to make efforts in recruitment, we, you know, we have several applicants, they come forward, and as soon as we get into the psychologicals and the polygraphs, we end up losing them. The Deputy Chief was just talking to some other chiefs today about the same problems that they're having and they're going through as well, so it's not unique to our town, it's on a statewide, nationwide situation, but we're all competing for the very best, and it's very difficult to do so, but we continue to do it. I want to say that my Training Division and Professional Standards Divisions, Captain Gonzalez, Lieutenant Rulo, Officer Santiago, they're doing extremely hard work in trying to recruit, and they've attended job fairs, and they're doing everything they can to continue to recruit, and, you know, we're, it's still at the forefront of what we're trying to do, trying to bring our ranks back up. Today, myself and the Deputy Chief and Captain Johnson, as well as a couple of other members of our department, we participated in a tabletop exercise in Waterbury. It's for the Blue Plan. The Blue Plan is a mutual aid compact between police departments within the Western Area Chiefs that we are a part of. It was an all-day event, and it's basically if we have a serious situation here in Torrington, we can call upon other, we can activate different levels of the Blue Plan and have police departments respond to assist us with dealing with whatever crisis we may be dealing with. It goes to say as well that when they have a situation or a problem, we will send an officer to assist them, one or two officers, depending upon the level of the Blue Plan activation. So it was, I think, the first of its kind in the state, and it was very well-received. Several police departments, administrators, and officers, as well as Litchfield County Dispatch and the Northwest Public Safety Dispatch, all participated in this. It was a very good training exercise, and Barbara can add to that. Also, finally, you were notified of an arrest or of a larceny robbery at the Harbor Freight Store this past weekend. It was more of a larceny and a little bit of a shoving match. Our officers did an excellent job in locating and identifying and arresting that individual for that crime, so they did yeoman's work on that as well. That's just, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Deputy Chief, anything to add this evening?
The only thing I just want to add is, we had the Out Golf Tournament a week or so ago. It was a success, sold out as usual, it was a good time.
Thank you. Deputy Chief, anything from fire this evening?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The local continues to do great work outside of the firehouse. They raised $17,000 for MDA this year, which I think is probably one of their highest years for MDA. Also, we had a great time raising $1,800 for the Tunnel to Towers Foundation, that was the softball charity game between the fire and PD. Of course, we won, that was my awesome pitching. So, you know, raise money for that, and congrats to Drakeville for the 75 years, it was good to be there, and I went to that event, and both Macklesses came from South Carolina after Dave was able to somehow maneuver through the trees and get out of where he was because he couldn't even fly out, so, I'm driving out, but that was a great event, and I was glad I went to that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Debbie, just, I have a quick question and follow-up to what I'd asked before. Off the top of your head, how many times do we call Litchfield Fire Department in a year?
In a year?
Yeah, I mean, just off the top of your head, just.
Litchfield in a year is probably three or four times, that's it. It's not much. Harrington West Side definitely comes. Now, the AMOS is a separate organization than the fire department.
Right, and I understand that, you know?
Yeah, and that's a whole different, a whole different animal.
Yeah, well, same towns, though. But, you know, I know, I understand the problem there, thank you.
All right, there being no further questions, we'll move on to AMS. Nothing this evening? All right. Any questions from the board?
I just have one question, following up with Commissioner McLeod, is when you call, when you need that ambulance, where do you go to?
I mean, when we're bringing mutual aid in.
Yes. So if it's tied up, and you call for that Litchfield ambulance, and they're saying, what do they say, they're not coming?
Yeah, so that basically is what happens, so, you know, LCD will start calling the surrounding towns, and, you know, generally we'll get Phantom or Goshen, or many times Winston or New Hartford, but I don't know where they are in that rotation, but they are called, and they're not available, so.
That's concerning, okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving into item nine, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna go to the screen first. Commissioner McElroy, anything this evening?
I'd just like to say congratulations to Mrs. Delavalle and all the police officers for the awards that they received tonight, and a great job by Drakeville for the 75 years, and the Torrington Fire Department also for their fundraising efforts and boot drive.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Battle, anything this evening?
I also, congratulations to everyone for their service. We're so always proud of the work you do. Congratulations on the 75 years, and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner McLeod?
Pretty much gonna echo the same thing. Can't believe it's been 75 years up there. One of my cousins was one of the founders, as my dad was a founder of Torrington, so never wanted to be a firefighter, but it was always somewhere around me, believe me.
We'll give you a award next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
On that note, Commissioner Benedetto, anything this evening?
I just have a question. Chief Baldwin, what's the status on the social worker? I know applications were in February, and the money was in place.
I'm working with the Human Resources Director. At this point, we have interviews scheduled for next week, so we're moving, we're moving in that direction.
What's taking?
We didn't have
How many applications? You have a lot?
We had probably around 10. Then they reached out to these individuals and asked them to come in for interviews, and we're only getting two. So, you know, so we'll see how that goes. It's still open, it's still on the city website for, we haven't closed that, but it's still open for individuals that are interested.
So 10 put in it and two only?
About 10, I don't know the exact
No, no.
I could get those for you.
Only two applied back, get interviewed?
Yes, Human Resources of the Personnel Department reached out to, I think, four or five, maybe even six people, telling them that we were gonna be conducting interviews for the position, and she got commitments from two.
Okay. Just congratulations to Drakeville, nice job up there in Drakeville, and the Torrington Fire Department raised the money, and congratulations on your win against the police department. Is it training, or was it, was it a big win?
It was a big one.
Maybe next year for the police. And congratulations to Carol Anderson, our city clerk.
Oh, thank you.
And please relay the message to your office. We got a good city clerk. We got a good city clerk's office. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. All right, there being no further business before the board, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all very much.